Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Newbury Board's Zoning Board of Appeals for the evening of June 10th, 2025. My name is Rob Chappetti. I'm privileged of serving as Chair. Many in this room, I know that this is not a first time here at the ZBA, but for those who know it is, welcome. I'm going to take a moment and call our role established or quorum. I'll also list for purposes of the legal criteria, which among our members will be the voting members this evening. Will be five voting members in any given year. And we do have two alternate members of the ZBA. So I'll just make it clear who is, who are five voting members. In the event of any conflict of interest or recusal, one of our alternate or associate members will, will step up and be the voting member. All members, whether associate, voting or otherwise, always participate in the deliberation process, the question and answer process. They're just not voting in very, in every other perspective, participating in the process. So without further ado, I'll introduce the members of the board. To my immediate left, we have Mr. Steven Delisle, Secretary. To his left, Mr. Gregory Bennet, member. Mr. Walter Bud Shannon, member. To his media left, Larry Ginta, who's our Associate Member. And Mr. Jared Igram, our newest once-in-futur man. Jared has been on this board many, many years ago, and many do know him as a member of our City Council, City Council President. So this is only his second evening with us. We'll rassle every single time until he gets home. But again, I'm Rob Chappetti, I'm the Chair. So our voting members this evening, well, let me just call the role and we'll, we'll go through who's here and who's not. Okay, calling the role of the Newbury Board's Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Steven Delisle.
Yes, here.
Mr. Ken Swanton is absent. Mr. Walter Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Gregory Bennet.
Here.
Mr. Larry Ginta.
Right.
And Mr. Jared Igram.
Here.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six members that are present. Of the six members present, the five voting members this evening will be myself, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Bennet, Mr. Shannon, and Mr. Ginta, unless there is a recusing. So without further ado, since we have called the role, we have established the form and do the legal business of this evening. I'm going to jump right into our public hearings. We have a matter, first on our agenda, which is Mr. Charles Griffin. It's a continuation from a hearing on May 27th, 2025. This is an application for a variance to allow a short-term rental unit on a parcel adjacent to the owner's primary residence. And in a moment, we'll hear from Mr. Griffin. Is he attending this evening?
No, he's going to continue his question.
Thank you.
July 8th.
That's right. This is a matter where we have been asked by Mr. Griffin for a continuance in the meeting of July 8th. That matter is before the board. Do we have a motion to approve the applicant's request for a continuance until July 8th and a second?
You're accused by someone.
It's better. Very good. Okay, so that would be. Mr. Bennet.
Okay.
And secondly, by Mr. Ginta. Motion's made to continue to July 8th by Mr. Bennet. Mr. Ginta, following the role, Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Ginta.
Yes.
Mr. Ag.
I have to accuse this one, predates me.
Very good. And Rob Chappetti, yes, that's one, two, three, four. In the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries matters, continue to July 8th. To take a moment, before we go into the second full hearing on our agenda, I'll just take a moment and introduce the individuals to my immediate right, Ms. Caitlin Sullivan, who's our City Planner, and Ms. Gretchen Joy, who is our Notager and our Keeper of the Minutes. When we go into the next public hearing, just for those that aren't familiar, we will open it with the applicant's presentation. We'll ask the applicant to go ahead and present. We do ask you kindly to take the podium if you're comfortable. So this way, it can be broadcast to anyone that might be online. There are very few, but there's still some. And we sign the cast on, online as well, holdover from the Biden era of COVID. But this in front of me is the camera called the Owl System, and then the microphone light we heard. Everything that we are seeing that you have submitted is also being broadcast right, who's online, and it's on the screen behind us. So all the members have their laptops. We're looking at the same thing. And so we'll ask the applicant to take the podium, present the application. After that, we close the applicant's presentation portion of the public hearing. We go to public comment. At that moment, I'll invite anyone in the public who wishes to speak in connection with the application to simply raise your hand, give us your name and address, and feel free to speak your mind. We ask you to keep it within two minutes if you can. We're very generous with sort of discretion, but it's been a self-policing process. You do not need to be pro or con, but you're welcome to say you are. You can simply just rise, raise your hand, rise, and speak your mind on the application. Know that if you pose a question in the form, if you pose a comment in the form of a question, we mean no discourtesy, but we don't respond to your question directly. But rest assured, we'll be listening to the, to the questions, and you will hear it in some form or another shortly by members of the board in the third segment of our public hearings, which is called Questions from the Board. After public comment in the room or any questions online, I close that portion with Questions from the Board. This is when members of the ZBA will pose questions of the applicant, the applicant's representative. They will often adapt questions, comments from public comment that are framed in the form of a question, will be repeated or be stated or paraphrased by a member of the board. After we've completed that, we'll close the Questions from the Board and we'll go to the final segment, which is deliberations. That's when you essentially, all of us get to hear ourselves and each other deliberating out loud the legal criteria of the applicant and the applicant's request, whether it's met, whether there are ongoing questions, and you hear sort of the sausage-making process by each of us and all of us, at the conclusion of which, once we've deliberated the criteria, deliberated the details, then any final follow-on questions. I will close that portion, that final portion of the public hearing, and I will invite a motion to approve a vote from a membership. Keep in mind that under Robert's rules of order, we, I will invite a, that I will invite a motion to approve. It's simply procedural. It doesn't mean that, that that member may make that motion, intends to support it, does support the application, or plans to vote in favor of it. It's simply a procedural mechanism in the form of, in the form of the affirmative, the motion to approve, to get it onto the table for a final vote. A motion to approve is made, and then once that's set, we call the role. For the application to be successful, it must have at least four votes in the affirmative. Four yes votes means that the motion carries and the application passes. So that's really the lay of the land. Without further ado, now that we've dealt with our one continuance, we'll go to our first substantive application. This is the application of Charles Hoyt, by Port Farm Lane. This is an application for a variance to construct a screen porch to a single-family structure on a lot that houses a multifamily structure through planning board relief. The new room is creating a new non-conformity at the rear yard setback. And with that, may we hear from you? Good evening.
Good evening. Chairman of the Board, members, thank you for your time tonight to hear our case. I'm, I'm here to represent Howard and Crystal Schmuler, sitting over here in the front row. We are here to ask.
That's Charles Hoyt. Oh, great. I thought it was Charles Hoyt. Just make sure that we, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. So I was hired to design a screen porch to go on the rear of their, of their house. This is the site plan, as you see on the, on the screen. That colored area is the 14 by 15 screened-in porch. It is, we're asking for the variance of the rear yard setback. We're approaching 14 feet into the setback. And we need to establish the hardship on why we, we should get this particular variance. So I'm, I'm reading from the written documents, support an application for a variance. Explain the conditions and circumstances related to soil conditions, shape, or topography for the land that would be unique to the applicant's lot structure or building and do not apply to the neighborhood land structure or buildings in the same district. The location of the existing house and the angle of the rear yard boundary does not allow for a small screen porch to be in conformity. The 210 square foot addition is approximately 180 square feet beyond the rear yard setback. At 14 feet into the rear yard setback. The other homes in, the other homes in Port Farm Lane development have their rear of home orientated in such a way that they have a 10-foot side yard setback. And as you can see on the site plan, this particular, on the other, on the other lots in that development have a 10-yard setback that faces their rear. Ours is 25, so that is the condition that we were up against that gives us the hardship. Explain how strict application of the ordinance would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the lot structure or building in the manner equivalent to the use prevented by other owners or the neighbors' properties in the same district. The answer, a small screen porch would have a minor impact and affords the homeowners, the Schmullers, a semi-outdoor space to get out of the sun and protect them from mosquitoes and other bugs. Explain how the unique conditions are not the result of actions taken by the applicant subsequent to the adoption of the ordinance, ordinance. The unique conditions affecting the property were already in place. They were not caused by the, by the Schmullers and the homeowners or anything afterwards. Explain how the leave will not constitute a grant of effective privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the district. A 14 by 15, 210 square foot screened room is a modest cast, and we humbly feel that granting this variance is within the sphere of the ordinance. A small screen porch of 210, 210 square feet will not reduce the property values of surrounding houses. It will not detract from the other home, the other homeowner's use or infringe on air, light, sun, and privacy. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because a small screened-in porch will not be overbearing and will allow Schmullers better use of the rear yard where there already exists a patio. Substantial adjustment will be done because the benefits to the Schmullers having a screen porch are ways and benefits to the public than them not having a screen porch. And I want to pass around photographs. Now I'll explain to you. The first photograph is coming out of the back, the back room of the house. So you can see, that's the area where the screen porch is going. Second photograph is looking at the side of where the, of the screen room. That beginning wall is limited to where the screen porch is going. The next picture on the next page is the other side view. The bottom picture on the second page is the fence that provides the rear property, the butts, the five. And again, the more pictures of the privacy fence. On the architectural drawings, sheet A1, you can see the floor plan and the 14 by 15 screened room on the back, the existing room. And then the proposed left elevation. Next. A2 is proposed right elevation and the proposed rear elevation. As you can see, it's pretty small. Ridge is very tall. It's at 14 feet, four inches. And then sheet E1 just shows that the front is no change, and that's the existing house footprint. And the last page is the existing condition drawings, the other provisions. I also have Howard, who or Crystal, that would like to speak on this application.
Good evening. Howard Schmoller. I recently moved to Newbury, about a year and a half. And we enjoyed our time here. We ran past, enjoying the proximity to our grand shop. Is, this evening, we'd like to answer your agreement around our request for a screen and porch, which we intend to use. We do the existing, entertain our deep family. And the difference is, we'd just like to have a little bit more comfort in the sense of less bugs, a little more shade, and, you know, a place to think where we can keep our furniture inside, weather, periodically. That's really our intent, for a better experience with living and being in the backyard. Our intent was to, is a modest addition to the home. We hope that you'll find that that is in keeping with the intent of your laws and the spirit of the neighborhood. And beyond that, not much to say.
Thank you. Okay. Anything further?
That's it. That would be it.
Okay. We'll, we'll, we may have questions, but we'll, we'll pause at this point, and we'll see questions if we have any to impose. Presentation for the moment, and thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. And we will go to public comment. Anyone in the room wish to speak in connection with the application? Feel free to raise your hands. Seeing no hands, anyone online?
There are, no way.
I see. Seeing no hands online either. I'll close public comment. Questions from the board? Who wishes to jump first? Any questions?
Would you mind putting the, and shows the weather? Let me just understand. I guess the presenter, would you mind responding or checking? Sorry. So there are three units in this condominium?
Yes, there is.
And I think you said, and maybe I heard you, that two, the other units, the structures of the two other units are inside here, setback?
No. The way it's, the way it's situated, the other two units that are in that development, their rear yard faces the side yard setback, which is 10 feet. But the condition that gives us the particular hardship is our rear yard is up against a 25. Giving us not the ability to construct a screened-in porch without getting a variance from rear yards.
Of the two other units, this center.
Yes.
And there's a, a gentle spot you've identified. Right behind the.
Yes.
And there's a fence and all trees between.
That is correct. The fence and the, and the trees do provide privacy and protection from the two neighbors.
Trees on condominium front?
Yes.
Are they on? Trees are on. Thanks. Sorry.
Can you mind? Sorry. We may have to stay at the podium. Absolutely. Mr. Bennet, were you, were you? I think we had Shannon as well as Mr. Ag, but, oh, sorry.
You guys go first.
Oh, all right. There's, there's no specific. So the variance, the reason you're here is you want to put it out the back of the building, which will encroach on 25-foot rear yard setback. And the neighbors, the other two houses have some idea, setback is 10 feet. Why can't you go out the side of the house so you don't go backwards? You could do that by right. You wouldn't have to come here for a variance.
We understand that, and that was originally, we discussed locating as, we had to think hard for the, we've been, I come for variance.
Variance is a very high.
I understand that.
Because hardship rule.
Completely, completely understand that. I mean, there is just a zoning thing, the, the screen in, the screen room on the rear of the, of the house, zoning-wise to the rooms that are in the existing house, it works better. I think.
It's, it's got to be attached to the existing, what is the bump out? Is that a screened-in porch?
No, the bump out is, is, I think it's just, it's, it's a sitting room.
Then a hall.
We use it as a hall.
So whether you go out the back of the office or the side of the office, how does that, does that change it? I'm just trying to find you. AI on.
No, I, I understand. It was, it was, was going back and forth on where to put the screen in room. We'd have to chop down a beautiful tree. There's some roof, roof lines that would be challenging to acquire. There's, I think you said it was an age.
And if we went to the top, that's where the tree is.
Yep.
Went to the lower portion, you'd see where the adjustment in the roof line is. You have to contend with that while all of the HVAC equipment is there. Right. There's, there's no doubt it's simpler where you are, but it has the severest impact on the ordinance. You've already had the setback, 25 points, whatever, six feet. Anything. What? You put gutters on the building. You know what I mean? You're, you're coming for a variance, anything you do, you go on the sides.
We abandoned that design. In, in the design process, I came up with several designs. I mean, I, 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 I understand the difficulties and, and the hardships that need to be met. So we weighed our options, and we decided to go with the, the design that followed the path of least resistance, both in an aesthetically zone, and we wanted to go with the variance. Built a 210 square feet. I know you, you would need to get a variance, it was just an overhang. But we wanted, we wanted to, and, and give it, give it, give it a try.
Yeah. I'm guessing none of us here are concerned about the size of, it seems, you know, modest.
It, it's more private.
It's, it's how much it kicks into the, the rear yard setback and gets closer to the neighbor who has already raised their hand and said, not fair. So you got two strikes, and you still look bad. The variance is, is tougher. This board struggles with variance because of the hardship. It is a funny shaped lot, I agree, but you can go outside, probably legally, all the way to the 10-foot setback, 60-foot building on that sideways. I, I know that's ludicrous, but you know what I'm saying? Is you can go out the side of a house a long way. Do it by right. You just get a building.
Can I ask my question?
But that's, I'm done with my question. Yeah, let me take, I'm going to take a pause here. Did you have, and you could just give us your name?
Uh, Crystal Schmoller. So, and, and the reason we're not opting to do that, because we know we could do that without the variance, is it makes that other room unusable, is really what happened. That's a sitting room that you have a walkway through to the exterior, the exterior patio door that is there now, that we have space to use on those sides. And you basically lose half of that room and use of it. So it's why, you know, it reduces that usage of space, and that's why. And we saw it as that patio was already in place there, and we're not using more space in that outside area. There is a patio there. We're looking to use for the structure.
Okay, we'll continue with, thank you. Any questions? Who wanted to?
Mine's quick. I just don't understand why the buildings, the other two buildings in the condo considered, that's considered a side yard. Why isn't it a backyard? It's shown at 10 feet, the, the dash line. Why isn't that in the backyard under the?
It's the way the condominiums were laid out. Yeah, the engineer who organized the site plan and reviewed that with the town, that's, that's what he put down for the, for the setbacks.
So it's just that it's on a drawing, a drawing? It's not, you didn't get a ruling from zoning administrator that that's.
Um, I can't answer that.
It's a single lot.
It's frontage on both.
It, it's considered a single lot.
Thank you.
Three, three of the.
Okay, any additional questions? Was that it? Mr. Ag?
No questions. Shalala, do you have any?
Yeah, I think Mr. Shannon got my question. I was just wondering if there was, if alternate sightings of the screen porch had been explored.
There were, there were two other explorations, and it just, there was three strikes against those other designs.
Yeah.
One, one other comment that we make is if you put it on the, the end that's closest to our danger, it, we would be literally sitting in their living room. Perhaps if we could do that. We found, we thought that that would be intrusive.
Okay. Further questions? All right, seeing no further questions, thank you, Mr. Hoyt. Thank you, folks, for your, your input as well. I will close some questions from the board, brings us to deliberations. Again, deliberating the criteria for variance. And who wishes to kind of kick things off for this discussion, for this portion of our discussion?
Well, I'll go first, because I'm the new guy. It, it really is out of no hostility towards, you know, the end result, but the code really does not allow us, we just can't make the findings, it would be defensible. We know that the immediate abutter is unhappy, and they have presumptive standing, so I just got to tell you, if you went in the land court, we could. So I, I just, you know, and, and the testimony that they could, you don't want to, I understand that. Yeah, if it were sort of a substantial, substantially more detrimental standard, the argument that you could, you know, you're just putting three walls around a patio might be. But for a variance, considering that they, it isn't just hardship, there's two other findings you have to make too. It's not a fact of rezoning. And essentially what we're doing is just saying, well, we want to wipe out your setback because we want. And I, I just, I just don't think we can do that, sorry. I think it does anyone any favors to do it.
Further deliberations? Thank you, Mr. Ag. Yes. I'll go. And again, just looking at the other four bullets we need to, to allow variance. First one was the conditions and circumstances that are unique to the applicant's lot structure or building and do not apply to the neighboring land structure, buildings in the same district. It, it is tough that some, some of the rear yard setback, so you feel for the applicant in that regard, if they don't. They don't, I can't convince myself circumstances, it's a big of a hardship, knowing that there is similar result. Even the second, the second bullet is strict application of provisions of this chapter would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of a lot, structure, building in a manner of pulling to the use permitted to be made by other owners of the neighboring land. Again, I think there are multiple options. They might be more costly to stand. It could even be. This. So I think those first two conditions, I'd have a hard time ruling a variance. You know, if it was a foot or two into the backyard, but it's, it's almost half one. 25 foot setback. Close, I, I would not be voting to approve.
Where is she?
Yeah, I, I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Shannon, Mr. Ackerman. I think Mr. Shannon noted bullet number two, the, that would be a hard finding to make based on the fact that we discussed that there are alternate configurations that maybe aren't as ideal, but they do exist. And for me, that would be, that would be difficult to, to. Then bullet number two is.
Thank you, Mr. Wild. To take a pause for a moment, not to interrupt, oh, deliberations. This is usually when I take a moment as chair and certainly include our applicant, our applicant's representatives in sort of what's happening, though not to suggest people are observing what's happening. As you may have discerned, the standard is very, it's very rigorous and regrettably for better or for worse, the way our, you know, our, our brothers and sisters in the, in the general court in Boston have written the land use statute and our zoning ordinance, all of which govern us as a board. There is a very strict standard and the highest in sort of what we do with city, at city wars to, which we have to make findings of it mean in order to grant a variance. As you heard Mr. Ackerman mention or make reference to, there is a lower standard respect to special permits, special permits for nonconformities. That's when we get to make determinations that are, you know, whether something is substantially more detrimental than existing conditions. Here we have to make a number of findings, the, I think the tallest of one of which is, is hardship, which can't be self-inflicted, of course can't be manhandled, and a number of other things. It is a very tall and very sort of nebulous standard, but when there are other alternatives, even if they're not practically, even if they're not favorable, maybe even not even practical, it is hard to put itself credibly to the decisions we make or try to make without sort of offending the continuity of that. I don't ever want to see an applicant sort of find themselves on the other end of a vote that's not favorable, because the, the other standard that we're all beholden to is that if you were to find yourselves with a vote, it's a family vote, you could be barred for up to two years with the same application to come back before the CBA, which is a, you know, which is a harsh sort of, you know, a harsh factor. We rather always invite an applicant to take a pause, take a step back, request a continuance, maybe take another thought of this to determine whether you may even need to come back before us if there's another alternative. I, I guess I don't know, but as you can sort of hear, already there's, it seems there's a mathematical impossibility that is afoot, right? So, so I don't want to pretend like we, you know, I mean, many of us are lawyers and many argue that lawyers are really bad at math. I won't suggest that I'm any better, but I can, I, I, like you, done the quick straddle, I, I'd rather preempt this and give you the opportunity to take a pause, a step back, if you wish. If not, we'll continue deliberations and then we'll go into a vote. But I wanted to take a pause at this moment for that purpose.
Can I speak?
Yeah, please. Not to interrupt, Mr. Boy, but I, if you wanted to consider options, you would either entertain a, you know, a request to withdraw without prejudice, which means you would be able to refile, or a continuance, which means nothing changes and we keep everything open. Those are sort of the options, other than. I, I think at this point, we, we understand what's, what the outcome's going to be. I think we either go for the final hearing and get the no, or we just withdraw, no prejudice. I don't think, it doesn't matter which, which one we choose. The video we do will get a variance. I mean, we won't, we won't be needing a variance.
With a different.
Correct.
True. I won't give, I mean, I, I want to refrain from the urge to try, you know, say something next that might sound like advice. They're very different choices, so I'll need you to pick one and we'll, we're happy to accommodate. I, I think that's a, I think that's a fine choice. Okay, so with, with that, thanks, I appreciate that. Certainly appreciate your understanding. Members of the board, so we have the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice. Do we have a motion and a second?
I'll leave that motion. Thank you, Mr. Wild. And.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Motion, the applicants, on the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice, made by Mr. Wild, seconded by Mr. Shannon, calling the board, Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yeah, Mr. Shannon.
Yes. Yeah. And Mr. Ross Shepard, that's, well, yes, that's fine, the affirmative, the honest advocate. Motion is withdrawn and request without prejudice. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Mr. Ackerman.
Okay. Moving on to our third and final application for this evening, this is the application of Jared Lee Hubbard, trustee of the Jared Lee Hubbard 2020 Local Trust and. I'm sorry, Bridgette and Harrington, trustee of Bridgette and Harrington 2020 Local Trust, Carib, Lisa, me, me, Teller, and Costa LLC. This is the application for a special permit for nonconformities for 47-49 Boardman Street. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, permissions, and approvals to construct two, two small additions which extend the pre-existing nonconforming side yard and rear yard setbacks and increase a nonconforming lot coverage. Turn to me.
I'm sorry, Chair. I'm sorry, this is another one where I, there's interference because I know the neighbors.
Very good. I guess so. So our five voting members for this application will be myself, Mr. Wild, Mr. Bennet, Mr. Shannon, and Mr. Shannon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, Lisa Mead, me, Teller, and Costa, 33, 33, the report on behalf of the applicants Jared Lee Hubbard and Bridgette Ann Harrington, who are the owners of the property. With me this evening is Leah McGovern, who is the architect on this project. Give the next slide, please. So the property is located at 47 to 49 Boardman Street. It's two-family structure, which the applicant's own. The proposal is to do two small renovations, which we're going to talk about in a little bit, which essentially are filling in a front porch and extending the entry a little bit, and then building over an existing deck in the back. Both of them are one-story additions for a grand total of 101 square feet. So two very small additions, just to give a little more breathing room to the family in their home. The project is located in the R2 zoning district, the demolition control overlay district. Structure was constructed in around 1850, according to the assessments part, and 1890, according to the district's deed sheets, where it's listed as contributory. However, because of how minor of impact the proposal is on the exterior walls of the house, the DCOD is not triggered, neither is the demolition delay by law ordinance with the historic commission. Next slide, please. And the next. So just to give you an idea of where the property is, you can see towards the top of the, of the mind maps, you have Washington Street, and at the bottom at the very corner, you can see High Street. So this is the first block of Boardman Street coming off of High Street, the second house to the end, prior to getting to Washington Street. Next slide, please. The property has a number of nonconformities, not surprising. The lot area of the property is 4,392 square feet, where 15,000 square feet is required for two-family in the R2. There's 52.75 feet of frontage, where 120 are required for two-family. The lot coverage is 35.8% or a maximum of 25% is allowed, so it's already nonconforming as well. Finally, the structure approaches on the setbacks with the front yard setback at 3.9. There won't be any change to that, where 25 feet is required. Side setbacks, 6.8 feet and 6.9 feet, where 20 feet are required. And the rear setback is at 23.4 feet, where 25 meters required. In addition, the property accommodates four parking spaces, which have essentially existed when the house was constructed, is 1914. We'll show you that in a minute. Next slide. So here's the 1914 sandborne map, and you can see the property kind of at the middle towards the top, right there. And that basically exists today. Next slide, please. So here's the site plan. So the proposal is happening on the right side of the property. And Caitlin, you can just bring it up a little bit, thank you. And the peach color indicates where the additions are going, so let's start at the back. So on the rear part of the property, there's currently a deck that is where that peach area is that wraps around to the back that says deck. And so the proposal is to basically put the one-story addition where the existing deck is on the right-hand side. So that will be extending the right side nonconforming setback. And also, since the rear setback is nonconforming, it also extends it a little bit to the right-hand side. So that's one of the extensions of the nonconforming setback. The other modification is to the front of the property, again, you can see the peach color, where the porch, the existing covered porch entry is open, that will become an enclosed area, and then there'll be a covered entry in front of that, and Leah will go over that in more detail. Because the decks don't currently count towards lot coverage, and now they will, because they will be a building with a roof, the lot coverage goes up just a slight, I think it's about two and a half or three percent, from 35.8% to 38%. But that's the reason, it's not because the building is, is expanding on what is already developed. Next slide. And so we thought we'd show you, so you can see, this is the front of the property, and you can see the right side porch that's going to be filled in, and that kind of entry will be brought forward slightly. Next slide. And here's the back, so you can see the deck, how it wraps around. The addition will stop at the corner of the house, and then when you see Leah's drawings, you'll see that that extended deck is going to go away, and there'll be a little step down in the back, and that spire goes away too, and more appropriate windows will be constructed in the new design. Next slide, please. Here's the opposite side of the house, just to give you an idea of where we are. Next slide. And there's a trip down the side of it again. Next slide, please. And this is again, the opposite side, the left-hand side entry. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Leah to go through this.
Hi, Leah McGovern, 10 Hancock Street. I'm the architect for the project. I don't have too much to add or too much to say, because I think it's relatively self-explanatory, but I'll just point out that the entry addition, which is 23 square feet, it's a very small amount of living area, but it gives a lot of breathing room and a place to dump jackets and coats and backpacks. The owners of this house have three young kids, so they can really make a tremendous use of this new space. It was designed to remain, to keep the same general look. It'll still look Victorian. The existing roof over the current entry will stay exactly as it is. It will just be extended to, to have a new front covered area for the landing to the steps to the main entry. So it'll look almost exactly the same. And certainly from the front, it will be kind of imperceivable, the difference, and it'll remain symmetrical on both sides from the front perspective. And as to the addition in the rear, again, it's using an existing deck area. It just gives a little bit more breathing room to the kitchen, so they can actually have a real island in there, and they can use that as a place to eat with the three kids and be able to store more food, essentially. I mean, so that's what 100 square feet is going to do an awful lot to make this house more usable for the family. If you have any other questions about the architecture or style, the windows will be in keeping with the existing style. Windows, unfortunately, they're not original, so they'll match what's there. Yeah, and then I'll entertain any questions after. How can we speak?
Good.
So Caitlin, why don't you go back up to the architectural slide there? So here you can just see, this is a good view of the, the two of the bays in the front, and you can see the existing entry on the left, and then the proposed entry on the right. And to Leah's point, you can barely tell the difference in the, because it's the same covered area. On the next slide. And then in the back, I think what, one of the things that's important about the changes that the applicants and Leah proposes is you can see that spire goes away in the back, that area is cleaned up, and a more appropriate set of windows are added, and you can see then the egress into the backyard, which is drawn. On the next slide, please. And again, this is the existing conditions. Next slide. And then the proposed conditions, which is just blown up. Thank you, and the next slide. So as the board knows, the standard for a special permit for nonconformities, which is section 9B2A, is that first, there will be no addition of a new nonconformity, as I explained, there is no new nonconformity. The only thing that's happening is extending the existing nonconformities, including that a little bit of lot coverage. The next is that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. And you go to the next slide. And the proposal, of course, does not reach further into the backyard than the current deck does. The addition brings unity to the massing of the structure and minimally changes the view from Boardman Street, as Leah pointed out. The proposed shape and volume amassing the structure still fits in with the other residents in the neighborhood. The applicant has taken great care to make sure that the design is historically and architecturally complementary to the existing structure as well as those around it, and is only removing 11% of the exterior walls. That's the number that's under the DCOD requirement. Again, the lot coverage is only increased by 2.2%, but that's because the decks don't count as lot coverage, and the footprints are on top of where the decks actually are. And then a big part of the deck in the back is being removed and not replaced. Then when comparing this lot coverage to other lot coverages in the district, if you could go to the next slide. If you look at where the lot coverage is, to begin with, at 47.49, it, well, that's the exact, sorry, if you, that 35.8 and it goes up to 38, it still falls right in the middle. So we're not, there's not a big change here, given the modest improvements that are proposed. Next slide, please. So we believe that the proposal can be found not to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood when it requests a new grant of special permit. Now, we just have a couple of neighborhood photos here. Caitlin, if you could do that. So this is looking up, so you've got High Street at the top and 51, 53, Boardman Street. Somebody's very happy that somebody's went to Alabama, looks like, on that particular house. The next slide, please, and you have 56 across the street, 51, 53. So you can see that everybody's up against the street, you know, this typical street in this neighborhood, very tight, and the architecture is all still very much intact. Next slide, please. And then the 60 to 62, 56 to, and 56, Boardman Street, another bay window there, which is interesting, there's a number of those along Boardman Street. Next slide, please. And then we have Washington Street, we have the house at 37 to 49, of course, that we're talking about, and then 45 to the street, and there's nothing happening on that side of the property. I also want to say that you have three letters of support in your file, one from 45 Boardman Street, one from 51 Boardman Street, so those are on opposite sides of the structure, and one from 52 Boardman Street, which is across the street. With that, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to take any questions.
Good. Turn to me. We'll close that portion and go to public comments.
Good, if you can, we'll close that portion and go to public comment. Anyone have any comments? Folks, anything?
Yes.
Did you want to just give your name and address?
We're at Julian's, we live on forty-five Boardman, and we won't be affected at all, and it looks like a great plan.
Anything from you, sir? I don't see any hands online. How we do? You covered it.
Hello, this is Jared Hubbard, I'm the petitioner, I just, I apologize, I couldn't be there in person today, I have to travel for a funeral. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Hubbard. And seeing no other hands online, no other hands in the room. I'll close public comment, and go to the questions from the board. Who wishes to jump?
I'll jump in. Special permit for non-conformity, we're looking for any sort of new non-conformity. Or a substantial, substantially greater detriment to the neighborhood than what exists currently. Although we do have a little bit of a increase in lot coverage. I don't really see that either of the two would be impacted by this application, so I have this for.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard.
Any questions? Do you have a question? It's a, sorry, it's a deliberate question. Any other deliberate question? Any other questions? No question. Okay. We'll close that, move to deliberations. Mr. Wallace's question is really deliberate, so you don't have to say it again. Put it under that category, thank you. Any further deliberations? I agree, all right. I agree. Mr. Bennet, anything?
I am on the same line with my colleagues, so I don't see any further deliberations. So we will close deliberations, do we have a motion over? Motion to, thank you, Mr. Ginton. Oh, thank you, Mr. Bennet, motion, yes, Mr. Ginton, second, Mr. Bennet, yes. Ginton, yeah, oh yes, it's five minutes, the I S A motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you both for coming. All right. Having completed that last application, that includes our public hearings for this evening. I will close public hearings and open up our business meeting, we have before us the minutes. We're stretching May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Any comments, revision added? Always with, of course.
I could just stop reading. Okay, item E, third paragraph, third sentence. Sentence says concerns abouters. I think it should be concerns of the abutters. Changing something, it's worried. It almost makes it sound as though we're concerned about abutters. Concerned. It's the concerns of the. Just makes it clear. It's, it's a net, I know. Well.
That's it, I know that we have seven minutes, that's a minute of that change. The second, that motion's made by Mr. Ginton, and the second to Mr. Ginton, the opposed one, the opposed favor say aye. Close, no abstentions, the I S A motion carries, but it's approved, thank you, Richard. So other updates from the chair and planning director, obviously, we have our forty B coming in next meeting. And it will be, you know, full contact, full impact exercise. But there's, I'm going to try to do everything I can with everyone's collateral, of course. To avoid like the plague of special meetings. Because I think it's already a taxing exercise to, you know, volunteer ourselves, our motion energy. For, so I spoke with Andy, and I invite the conversation with every one of us. With respect to being careful about setting the docket with any ongoing applications, I think at the minimum, we should start. Make thoughts of it, we should start by having no more than two other sort of applications on any given evening. That we will be dealing with forty B, you know, we need to still make forward, you know, progress. We can't just become stagnant, new applications for all of the legal and practice law uses. But I think it's, I think it's at least rational to have two, keep that moving forward, you know, we can tweak it as we feel appropriate. Seems very performa, perhaps two of those, then maybe we can knock three out. But I want to give us time and energy to deal with the forty B. I also propose, and love your feedback or just thought, on beginning with the opening next meeting. Kind of laying the lay of the land, what we're going to expect, what we would like to give fair and full notice to the applicant or representatives on. Respect, this tracks out, I know Jared has quite good experience in the practice, you know, as well. I do very little bit of practice, and I do a long go on this. Most irrelevant, you know. Because we're the comprehensive. Everything set about us, so we have the power to set a legal budget, so that we get this peer review and professionals. We have the power to give fair notice to all of the other sort of professionals who want the applicant to enlist. Or allow, even more fund us to enlist, so that we can have the expertise we need to properly do the job of comprehensive permitting. When most of the work will be outside of our typical work, dealing with everything, you know, every single body, boards. All of those with us, so we might not be tracking some experts, I'm sure we aren't, I know why. We will be dealing with, you know, drainage and hydrology in ways that seem hybrid, you know, geotechnical, hydrochemical. So the next steps there, engineering, design, other areas from, you know, that's impact to anything we can. So, so that's something to sort of think about, I think we can have a conversation via email between now and that next meeting. Sort of make sure that we come out, here we come out organized with that personal thing. Through thoughts. Think if we lay, you know, lay the groundwork for what we should expect. We can continue to be credible, I expect, we should all expect a full house. Many people, not the vast majority of people, have no idea how this process works. So educating and reeducating gently but sharply. As though everyone, everyone evening one, not being the same people on evening two, just kind of restating it. Will help kind of keep us honest, keep folks, you know, hopefully dull the sharpness, what might be buyer and members of our community. Come in with a certain sense and sensibility about things perhaps, and we want to make sure that they get to focus their energies on the substantive part of it. And not misunderstanding the procedural part of what we do, so we're trying our hardest to make sure that we educate, reeducate. What we can do, what we can't do, how we do it, members of the public see some continuity, read that, spread the process. Hopefully the wheels don't all spin. That's, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I guess, I think, I think the residents' point of view, they would, they would want to see us have representation here. And you had mentioned experts, and I think on the first night, we should have an attorney from, you know, the city that is an expert in forty B. We certainly, we have a lot of smart folks here, a lot of legal folks, but this might not be our criteria. And we need somebody who that this is their criteria. I don't want, I don't want the residents to think that we're outwore on per se on this, and want to make sure we have somebody in the room that knows this law.
Do you think we should plan to do that from a ninety-one forward?
Yes, yes.
So why don't we make that request of ours, this is the spirit, I know that we talked about this offline, sir. That is fantastic, you know, best for all. And.
I had another one, just because I said several of these, I think it would be worth, maybe you're already alluding to it, is you say the lay of the land is explained to the public. Public, most of the public thinks that we can just say no, we can tell these people, go home, no. And we really can't. I mean, we can, as long as we're ready to, you know, get. Boys, drugs, and money, right? There's no question, so I think it would be good if we could explain to the public, this is a Massachusetts state law. Except forty Bs. Within the guise of what makes sense?
Well, it's a delegate, in that spare space. Not to be stated in any way, but it has always been, and will probably be, a balance of, you know. Balancing the. Without tipping that scale. It's push far enough, as far as you can without knowing at what point you get some precipice. It's power shifts, to your point, if that, you know, we play our hand, overplay our hand as any municipality. The applicant always has the option to, you know, as, go to whatever's for military, it's impossible. And Boston. And that trust upon us was generally acceptable. Commonwealth, on mass standard.
Which is, which is a tough part. It is, it's much harder than what we're going to do in here.
So, so I think that's a, advisory, they, yeah. And so, and so they will hold us to a standard, not a numerical standard. Hold us to a general average standard. Where new report and any of, you know, Essex County and others. Are we right up against Hampton County and Chicago, Mass, and everywhere else? Does not bias favorably, think about local controls. They care what we think best for new report, giving residents that basis. So yeah, that's great. Or maybe have, you know, the council, you know, take the first pass.
Somebody should throw it, and then we re-explain it.
You, just from looking at from a point, you both, what you both said. Is that this is the law, and we have to abide them. You said, we're going to turn over every stone along the way, make sure they're working within the rules, if you will. That we, Leah's award, we're going to make sure they check their bonds, because that's why we're here.
And it is somewhat a negotiation, there are going to be things they're going to propose. You could propose an alternate thing, unacceptable, because of something within the city ordinances that fits us. In my town, I was in roof pitch. We talked someone into doing a manser roof, because it doesn't look like it's big steeple. It dulls it. Build a stick, yeah, it cost me a little more money, but I get, yeah, I think things like that are negotiations.
Well, one thing that would really help, I don't know whether it would be Caris Art that comes in, because I know from the time I was on the city council, there's a litigator. Getting in the wings, just us forty, right, so they may want that. Come in the first night, and just summarize these rules, but I agree with Larry that. Well, first, on the rules, there's a big difference between the standard for saying no, which is very, very. And imposing a condition. As long as it's, as long as you don't make the project uneaten on it. They don't kill the project, you can, you can tell them. Back to Larry's point, which is, you know, I plan on the first night to lay my cards on the table for return to me and say, hey, here's what I, here are the experts I think we need. We want to get you through this process as quickly as possible, we might not sandbagging you. But, you know, we, we're not experts on one, two, three, four, five. And put it to the board, whether they want to hire those people, you know, but do that in public. So that the public knows we're being diligent, which is really hope.
Agreed, so can we get, so yes.
Yeah, I believe that's already, you know, already reached out, just that.
Should we set a timeline? Or do you just let this go on a meeting?
On the, on the meetings every night?
Yeah.
I agree with, for instance, you just let it run amok. No, I wouldn't do that. You can be here till eleven, I'd rather, I'd rather come back.
Exactly.
Just continue with his bite-sized pieces, than have these marathon sessions.
No, we won't do that, I think we should, so I want to do any, any, the other two applications or any other two applications on our docket. It's always be the third item. And no matter what happens, we have to have hearts, we should just simply say, this is what it is. And that is, what? One, or is it second?
No, nine o'clock.
Ten.
It's not eleven, or?
Yeah, let's not do eleven. During COVID, didn't we say ten, ten thirty?
I think ten. I think it was used. We went, we went to midnight. I think, I remember, I remember this. Brian, what did I say? I said, Mr. Bennet, you raised his hand, and I said, Mr. Bennet, you have something you want to say, he said, yeah, I say, I want to say, I want to go home. I said, do we have a second? And honestly, it woke me up to the fact that, you know, we had, we were, we had, we had forgotten that. We, you know, we do, we work so hard for, you know, for our community, right? We forgot that we're also human beings, and like families, and maybe. Cicadian rhythm, that needs to be met, and other things, right? So that was almost midnight, I'm obviously. Yeah. Things will be on its call. Yeah.
So, just to comment that the former president of the council should bring up to you. Is that you have the limit of a comment, because.
No question, we talked about that as well, we're going to run.
But you, you gotta do whatever, you gotta do whatever.
I'm going to, when I, so, I mean, I know that you guys all suffered through my sort of, you know, my, my opening shtick. But I do that as a preventative measure, as well as an informative, hopefully informative measure. To tell them what we're going to tell them, that tell, that tell them what we told them. And so to speak to our, you know, our peers, our members, and our fellow citizens in the community, to say, this is how this goes, this is the flow, this is the work. These are the segments, this is what we do. This is the timing, we will exercise discretion, but we will also be very courteous to tell you, time's up. And it's not because we don't want to hear it, it's because we, others are sitting and waiting to have their moment too. It's not fair to your peers, or your other, you know, your, your member, you know, your fellow neighbors.
You can also, you can also comfort them, unlike some of the C C A S things, they're going to get more bites. Yeah, because the hearings can stay open. You know, so, so when, say, say, for example, you know, we have a first meeting, people get two minutes. On the next meeting, they get another two minutes. And it'll be different topics. And maybe we won't, maybe we won't hurt back on stormwater, we'll get a chance.
I think, you know, we should also think about, I mean, honestly, the more calculus we bring into this, the more content we create. You know, it's great, thinking about it, and listening to you guys. In addition to the two minutes, which will hold to a regular, at least tell me we will, we'll exercise. I'll exercise like, you know, gentle, you know, discretion to allow people to finish their thought, right? With fair warning, just like, but we should also limit how many of these two-minute agreements will we.
Well, you have the, in my, in my view, you have the ability to say, there's fifty people in the room, so we're going to have one. Or you can make that determination before we even get to the meeting yet, there's only going to be one, one minute. And then secondly, you're only going to speak about what's presented to us today. I don't want to hear about stormwater issues when we're not even talking about.
Yeah, that's a great point, and that's just about like, you know, telling you what we're going to tell, you know, and giving them, you know, giving them that expectation, it's a great idea. Because I think folks, if they start to read weakness in us, they will doubt us.
Another one that, that's worked. Another one that, that's worse. Now they're
And you know, you guys, it's great that we have two members of our city council served to back, you know, like handling, you have experienced this.
We die, we die, we die.
With torches and torches about dogs and
You, you guys aren't wearing, you're wearing none of your purple hearts, you know.
But another thing that often works wrong is, uh, you can say, people, listen, you, you know, i- if someone said something that you thought was really good, you can just say, I agree with Mr. X.
Well, that's good.
And it takes ten seconds, then they know that, you know, they get a tick, you know, that they weren't ignored, but it just saved us a minute and fifty seconds.
Fifty people, one minute, you're, you're burning out.
And our brains explode, we just can't.
If, if you get a lot of people, you won't get the public comments first.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Yeah, but if we tell them, you know, we're gonna keep this, we're not gonna get
We're not doing, we're not gonna be Do you want to even sign it on a list like it's any council?
It would be good.
That's a wrong, you know, signing of this.
Yeah, so like there, there's a queue of people who are gonna talk.
And, and you mean like have like a clipboard?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we had a clipboard, we had, like, we, let's say we just decided pretty good, please if we create a signup list that has, you know, if we decide we're doing two minutes or let's say we get more comment out of one minute comments. And we, do we want, are we thinking about like dedicating hours, maybe fifteen minutes to that because fifty people, so we
I think you really have to do that on the fly. Like you'll get the list. This is a really good idea. Also, it saves brechen time because then they give their address.
Yeah.
So that saves another ten seconds.
Right.
I always have such and such.
So basically, we, we, we have the list, tell people to sign up right now, like, and if there is an open slot, get it, if not.
And then, and then, you know, uh, uh, Caitlin can hand you the list and you can evaluate it. Say, listen, I got sixty people here, you know, and then you can decide how you wanna divvy it up. Two minutes each or one minute each or.
I think one minute is too short.
Yeah, I wouldn't do it.
Most people can't. I, I, I've never done it.
I've never done a minute because
Yeah, minutes tight.
They get upset.
Exactly.
Probably the better way to do this is say, listen, I wanna give everyone two minutes, but once we get to an hour, stop, come back next time.
Yep.
It, it almost be nice to host that stop on the website. So if there's organized groups, I'm gonna assume there will be.
You might have
And, and maybe they'll, one person speak for the group.
Yeah, that's right.
Like, you know, I don't know who these folks are, I'm just saying that this is generally how this works.
Yeah, I, I even had hearings where, you know, the person speaks, he says, everyone agrees with me, please stand up. And they stand up and, and the, the minute taker knows, you know, thirty people stood up.
So we've got a signup list, just nine minutes. Two minutes, as we said.
You always have discretion, you know, you can wing it, you can wing it, but that would be
Do we let anyone who wants to sign up, sign up? Or do we create? Let, let the list go.
Yeah, or, or again, truncate it. If there are a hundred people on the list, no way you're gonna get thrown down the first line.
So you, you do that. You take the list and say, okay, if there's a hundred people on the list, we, we don't have any time to get any work done. So like if somebody who stands up says what you're thinking, and I call your name, just say that comment's already been said, we'll move on to the next one.
And then the note taker can know. Person seconded.
Do you think we'll actually get the public comment the first night? So the presentation will take three hours.
I think it will be expected of us that we hear from the public on the first night in some capacity.
Absolutely.
Um, now you can't get out of this room alive.
Because sometimes the presenters take, I mean, it's comprehensive, right?
The first night, they should be under some kind of restrictions.
Well, I think it's good, I mean, Lisa, Lisa's a lot of experience.
She does.
She doesn't need to, she doesn't need the grants, you know.
Sixty waivers. We have to go wherever we wanna go.
Not one night.
Yeah, you do, first night. Cause they're on the table.
Now, we can continue.
Are they gonna give you a comprehensive document?
It is.
There. You got it?
We had it in writing.
Okay, so we already know the waivers?
Yeah, yeah. Um, we're not gonna get the whole back.
No, I'm not saying vote on it. It's just, they present and then you go to public comment, right? Presenter's done, you follow the same.
Well, don't you also want us to get out of public? Almost we want.
I guess three things you gotta do that.
I, I would also, staff can talk to, to the applicant. I mean, again, we, we don't, we have the written material. We don't need to do a No. And, and we're gonna continue that thing. We're not gonna like say, okay, we're done, we're gonna move now. And they're gonna, they'll get another chance.
Well, in many weeks, if not months.
Right, and they know we have that. With no rush to do anything, it's just the first night is the unveiling. We've already got it all. All it's gonna wanna be heard from, there's a lot that's gonna be jammed into the first night.
Okay. And is it?
I think we're all very hits. Yeah, is it still a ninety day window? And ask for continuous extensions? Is it ninety days?
No, I know it's a hundred and eighty.
Uh, no.
Yeah, forty, forty days to make the decision. We're not gonna need
What's that?
We're not gonna need that whole time. That's six, seven months.
Okay. So signup list. Caitlin, can I ask you the?
As they walk in?
Yeah.
Talk to the city clerk, right?
Every time we At the table or something, we're gonna have a list. Um, it says signup for public comment and and then
That's a great idea.
Do we want to lock it that the public can see?
Like a chess. No, you don't, you don't have.
Do you have an apple?
Do, who would protect you? Just, just having done this will protect you from criticism, you know?
It's not Have to have a plot.
Oh, of course we're gonna plot. I'm like, I think I got a lot of ways to, but I get it.
I have to have a cat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had to like that, close it all your hands.
Official timekeeper.
Was it that?
Um, something, someone's gonna have time, we'll have forty five to apply to.
Yeah, I can make a pro se. Impossible Caitlin to get the filing and hard copy, you know? It's very difficult to she can't.
Do you, do you think they'll bring them for us?
Exactly. Actually, what I thought, one of the documents
Well, under, under the, I mean, under the rules.
Yeah.
It is, you're supposed to give us twenty copies anyway.
Oh, so then ask them to give us twenty.
But, but I think you can kind of slack on like all of the tables.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, the stuff that
Transportation, yeah.
Yeah. You provide and we can make requests needed by
Yeah.
Application stuff needed, September letter, request, uh, zoning matrix. Very helpful.
If you had a stack of them next to the signup sheet, that will protect us from criticism as well. Although everything's available online, members of the public will say, I haven't seen this. Here's a copy.
So you ask Lisa Meek in advance? Issue, yeah.
Um, and have copies to be sung.
Yeah.
Viewed just to be
Borrowed, but then returned to a table or something. It, it'll, it, believe me, it'll save you a lot of heartache.
Okay. Other question?
Sure.
Closest the city to the ten first?
Really close, we're at nine point four five. In fact, if, if this year we were to improve forty two, we'd also be statutory with forty two units as the only key to this.
Yeah. No, that's good until it sets.
Yeah.
Okay, we're taking it.
We're real close.
But it's the same as not.
Yeah.
Well, we, we should, I, I, I mean, that's a legitimate question to ask the litigator. Because when you go to the hack, you know, uh, you know, they're supposed to be making a decision based on, on local need.
Right.
There's a, there is a difference between local need of, you know, eight thousand units, two units.
Yeah.
Good difference.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's
Which gives us, which I think gives us a little, little help.
Yeah, a, a little bit, but
it's not as, it's, it's not a big check button. It's easy to be, it was agreed and wants
Yeah.
Punch, you know, press. Be, be helped, we may understand what for that option of, you know, local needs, if it's ten percent and we need fifty more. Two hundred, so what's the significant legal significance? Can we nip that, you know, you have, I mean, see what I mean, Rob? I, I like to know what because the whole notion, the whole standards, the whole needs, we have that local needs must stay, local needs is the overarching is our assumption, thing every different there's a presumption, if you haven't met the goal yet, that, that we have a session. But
But I think it rashes the other way, actually. If we were over the ten percent, or if we were to develop forty two de-restricted units this year, then the, the hack would defer to us on whether a project is meeting local need. Because we haven't hit those numbers, we're still under the ten percent, we haven't got forty two in one year. My understanding is, they reverse the burden. We're gonna have to show a hack that there's something really horrible about the project that, that conflicts with our local goals and so on. It should be really hard to do. But, 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 but you're right. I mean, we should get, maybe something we wanna go in a closed session on, actually. I mean, get our attorney. Let's, you know, ask him his question.
Maybe we do that after, we do that on
Do I go to closed session on night one?
After. We, oh, yeah.
If you can, if you get the same guy on the same night, it'd save him a trip, saves him a leave.
Well, that's why I made it, he's here for the open.
Yeah.
Let's keep him here for, you know, closed session. And, I'm sorry. Just, no, 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 and just, it, it, the sooner we learn this.
Yeah.
Sooner we confirm our suspicion and our, like, respect suspicions about how this, you know, mechanics of this plays out. The work, right? We will be outside of session. Better that sooner versus to discover. I don't wanna get caught in a question, you know, that's directed to us. And we have to say, I'm sure. Golly, that's a, that's an interesting question. You know, I have a point, it's a worse position. I don't know, I don't wanna be in that position. We are, it is a I'm going You have
It's still, still relevant.
Wars. Um, okay, Caitlin, we, we knew it was kinda Yeah, yeah. You know, give it to the
First, right? Seventy six year old. So are, we receive a lot, we receive the injury reports from
Absolutely.
Are they in this file right now?
No, no, I've, I've, I've been pestering Rob and staff about this because I, I don't wanna, I wanna be able to tell the applicant on the twenty fourth. So, but here, here's the rule.
So they didn't do a traffic study on their own?
No, they did. We, within seven days of getting the application, staff has to send copies to all of other staff.
Right.
And Andy did that. He did that. So my understanding is he, he's getting some studies, like we have our own transportation engineer, T C. So they can, you know, peer review. But, but hold on, there's one, there's a question I have for the attorney. As the statutes, we have to invite to appear our, our hearing, yes.
Commissions and so.
So they may fortunately have to show up in person. And I think that may be because they want the applicant to be able to cross.
Maybe.
Yeah.
The, whoever the department is, so, so
Chairman of the sewer
You, you mean the other boards, commissions?
Right. They may have to come in first.
Yeah.
Or their So once they submit their feedback reports for students, they need to, they need to walk in and be here.
That's, that's what the statute says, if there's case law.
And, and And then to that though, we can still request a peer review from the third party and man, always.
But we're never gonna get these there. June twenty four.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. That's just the opening. I was just saying on June twenty fourth, I think we would say, here are the reports that we are gonna commission. Just so you know, you know, I think it's only fair to the applicant.
Are you saying that the audit of the sewer commission doesn't occasion to submit a report to us unless we request it?
Correct. We don't have an obligation.
And when and under what circumstances, how do we do that?
Jerry? Andy already made the request.
He made some requests, but there are others that he didn't make. I, I'll give you an example, um, uh, under the, uh, E O H L C guidelines and state guidelines, when they gave that fundability letter, which is in the file.
Yeah.
Which made them eligible, they're supposed to look at sustainability. But there's nothing in the application other than like, we're gonna do low flow toilets. So, you know, I, I'd wanna hear, we have people on staff, you know, energy efficiency. I think I, I wanna tell the twenty fourth, hey, just so you know, I'd like to hear from those people. You know, if you're not doing stretch code, why, because they asked for waivers. Yeah, I don't know what they're asking. That's an example. And Andy didn't ask for that.
It would be helpful.
So we do that, that's a trick. We're gonna plan to do that.
Yeah, I wanna put the cards on the table. I think the board has to vote. I'm, just because I, you know, I get it.
Andrew, who he's, who he's requesting for, sorry. Who he hasn't?
Yeah.
You know, and what the universe is, I like the universe, people in the city who, who have kind of weigh in.
Yeah, well, there is a, there's an S J C decision. The universe of people is everybody.
Okay.
Anybody even
Official city
That's what I mean. You're not limited there in the statute. You know, you're not limited to any set of boards. Anyone you, anyone who works
But I guess at a minimum, you wanna know actually what are the things that exist in city hall that could Those fourth agencies and authorities within the city government that are available to respond to a request.
Who is asking?
I got you.
It's the sewer commissioner, it's the what?
Yeah.
Do you want John Eric here?
Oh, weird.
Yes, I can abruptly ask that information, man from nine.
So we get
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Hold up. What does Andrew want to give?
See, like the fact of the vision you're saying, he was thinking would go in the staff report as usual, but we can get that vision to you sooner.
Okay, so Andrew proposes, we will receive a staff report.
Yeah.
And it will include
What's his contact? Experts.
Okay, and when will Andrew provide that? See, anticipating to give that to us by?
Yeah, as usual, it'll be the week before.
Okay. Okay, that'll be very he's doing a lot. So what way to report?
Well, one that's a weird one, and I think the only reason I mention it is I think some of the public will jump on this, school. It is depending on the size of the units, whether they want two or three bedroom. It impacts the volume of children that will end up in the city. And very, very few towns, look at that. Few towns and cities say, two hundred units, I'm gonna have a hundred kids.
That's a good catch. We, that, we've done that. We did them.
Your school boards and stuff.
Good at estimating.
Yes.
Oh, they know. Capacity, they do know. You know, a couple of times it was overlooked and we had. Parents in here and a couple of teachers going, we can't take two hundred more kids, we don't have the capacity, we'll have trailers up. Well, the, the, the school committee has to do it because of school choice.
Yeah.
They have to know how many seats they have available, and there is an accepted calculus based on bedrooms. So we think, we think, we did that already ten years ago. And the reason it might be important is. I said, sometimes this becomes a negotiation, right?
Oh, yeah.
So they have. They have two hundred plus units, right? It's say they have fifty in the three bedroom. If the impact on the schools is so severe, you might get them to knock into two bedrooms.
Yeah.
And it's still financially feasible, and stress on the schools goes away. Because two bedrooms are usually one kid, maybe two. Or two, three kids.
Didn't it, because of the. Case law, this, this administrative. A quasi judicial board, it's a little tricky, you know, what you, what we can and can't do, but it's absolutely something we should ask.
Sure, just so we're aware.
So we're aware, because it may be a non-issue, like, for example, on the forty yard, ten years ago. In the calculation, you were good to go.
Yeah. And, and we might be good to go. But it's just two hundred.
If you don't ask, if we don't ask the question.
We won't know. And all the schools, though.
Yeah.
This other system should be adapting to this. You know, here's a. There's no question that. Potential. Impact is new student enrollment in our school system exceeds our school system's capacity to absorb. I don't know, calculus, but it seems to me that we are already.
We're close to.
Well, when. I will, that, that presupposes that we strip away any of the choice seats.
Yeah.
So that means what, so we can't, we can't, we can't apply with one statute by another.
I mean, Rob, I, I just had a kid graduate in high school, so I, I'm with you, but that's not what we found ten years ago. Because they, they've been predicting a decline in public condition, which is kind of.
But I don't have the calculus.
Let's get it in the record, let's get it in the record.
So, so we need to, we need to address this, this is where I'm gonna apply and interfere.
Yeah.
If you see something, say something, like, on night one, that's when the clock starts.
Yeah.
Let's not leave anything out, let's be heard, being heard. Um, let's be on the record with respect to the ask. And include more than we might even think we need.
Sure.
Um, and cast a very wide net with respect to experts, expertise, boards and commissions, and city departments, department heads. And respect, corresponding, ports, um, review and such that will. That will inform our ability to do this work.
That's a question, who, who pays for it?
The applicant. You know, the only thing that's unclear is, is, uh, because it's forty B, legal fees, they have to consent. If the boards and commissions and the cities and partners are already, these are salary. The, we ask, will the applicant pay for that? But it's only legal fees, my, my read, incorrect if I'm wrong, Jerry, feel differently. My reading is that legal fees only are discretionary and must be sent to.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the, the fact of the matter is, um, I mean, it's not a secret, the applicant may feel pressure to agree to legal fees. But we're not there yet.
Let me ask what, should we? Think through. Now, or when, the next two weeks or three weeks, what independent expert?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I, I emailed Rob, and I didn't wanna break formal rules, and we haven't opened the hearing, so I was waiting until we get the staff report.
Okay.
But, yeah, I think you guys all should think about, I thought about, what don't I know?
Yeah.
And also.
What comes to you?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I mean, it's, uh, as we're opening session.
Yeah.
Um. Uh. Uh, I definitely want someone to look at the parking layout. Because that's a shared driveway, you know, for the shopping center, and I don't have that expertise. Um. Architecture, uh, I, I have pretty good expertise on that, but I'm not an architect. I think we benefit a lot of other cities, like other town, they always have an architect on staff. And that architect can, can vet the plans, they don't redesign the building. But they vet, say, this, you know, look. That's two.
Yeah.
Um. Those are, uh, those are outside, we don't have that on staff, so that's outside. Then, um, on staff, I wanna know about stormwater, they want waivers on stormwater, I don't really understand. So I need a city engineer to tell me, you know. And then, uh. Uh, and then it goes for weapons, too, upper zone probably doesn't matter, but I don't. Yeah, it's across, there's a well. And then, uh, another thing on staff, they ask for waivers on the local building regulation. I don't even know that we have any local building regulation, so I wanted to ask for girls to tell me. That's on staff, um. We use international building, we can't give any waiver from that anyway, so I. I don't really understand what it is.
Yeah, we shouldn't be asking.
There are some things that they're not required to give us, but would help me, like, they don't have a lighting plan. You know, and the neighbors are gonna care.
Absolutely.
And, and so, and then, uh, same thing with the signs, they only said. Through these locations, but that's. That's not good for me.
Does our city have a sign or an.
Well, I want waivers to be directly lit versus. If restanding signs aren't permitted.
Yeah.
Then others have ties.
I think the biggest push you wanna get from.
Traffic's here in mass.
Because traffic's right now trying to get.
Traffic's awful today.
All today, so they're gonna wanna have us have a traffic.
Yes. And I, I know, and that's what I'm saying, Andy says, he already told me today by email, he has asked for that, and that'll be moved.
Has that, but, but I think we should. Independent expert.
Well, this tech, this tech person is supposed to be contracted by us.
Okay.
By the applicant.
Yeah.
So they'll have their expert from Boulder. We'll have our expert, and then one night this summer, we'll have them both here.
Right.
And if we ask to have a traffic study. My experience, when that takes a month.
Well, they did one, they submitted.
Right, sometimes. You may want to rebut them with a second study.
Oh, yeah.
Because they have to put all the, um. Poses on the road and measures the traffic.
Yeah.
They, they don't have to, they didn't count, they did count, right, they, they did count last.
So.
So we might be able to say, take the counts as best, now the interpretation of the counts, but.
Still, you still need to give lead time to your consultant, you can't just bring them out.
I gotta tell you, the traffic people disagree with each other more often than not. And as far as a solution. It'll be up to us, I mean, all we can do is sort them out. Decide what we want. You know, sometimes those things push the project. Another, another one.
Well, it would if, it, it would if they had to do, if they had to do like a signal.
Or multiple. But I don't know that we're gonna get there, dear. I think this is still small. In my experience, two hundred, well, we, we don't know yet, probably a hundred cars in the morning. We'll, for a while, we're gonna find out.
All right.
What about, what about suing?
Yeah.
Sorry, I forgot, I mean, I talked, remember, cause last time the neighbors talking about backups. So I did, I called Shaw. Can't remember his first name.
Uh, David.
David Shaw, who's the sewer guy. And, um, I was talking to him about that. And, uh, or two, that, um, he wasn't wearing any. There's odor. But then I.
That's not a sewer, that's a one.
But I, I, uh, he said, he, he intimated that he needs money to finish the sewer flow for this one. So, so I, I alerted staff. I passed along.
You mean, in order for this project to connect, he would need additional funds?
Just to do, finish this.
Oh, I got it.
Finish this, and then.
You also.
You obviously notice in their application, they, they have a set fee that they wanna pay.
Right.
Right. So that's one of the experts I forgot, that I wanna bring in, I, I'd like to hear from the sewer commission, how do you come up with that fee rather than just charging?
It's a big discount.
The last one, yeah.
But, and, and that gets to capacity, right? Because that's something that was some years ago was an issue, like, is there sufficient capacity? With the existing infrastructure?
Correct, the, the problem you have is specific to the street, that's why we need Shaw. You know, Low Street and, and Story Avenue are gonna have very different capacity than Merrimack Street, which is pretty much.
Where's the sewer, you know?
No, it has to go all the way down to Jabba. We just wanna treat the treatment.
What?
Oh, oh.
Merrimack Street line.
Merrimack Street, I think it goes out through the traffic. We'll find it.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. All right, hey.
I mean, one other thing. We kinda get ready for the. Should you put together?
For the first night. Well, we have, what do you mean?
Talking points or something. Agenda. Everyone's gonna have the order.
Yeah.
That's the order.
Sorry, it's a pain, but suggestion is you may actually want us to go after. These. Because we'll be able to say, all right, here are the studies, here are the, then they're, then. Because otherwise. They're all gonna assume the worst.
Mm-hmm.
And they're gonna go second after we say, what about the sewer? What about the traffic?
No, no, so just to be clear, my, my plan, you know, sort of the flow of show, right, it was gonna be. Um, it was going to be when, when we open, before we, you know. Yes. As soon as we hear their presentation. I'm going to press pause in that flow of show, and we are going to go through our, you know, sort of. List of, you know, of, uh.
Board wish.
Yeah, yeah, the boards sort of, uh, you know. Wish list of, of experts, expertise.
It should be.
Yeah.
I, I think.
Gonna explain to the public that that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, but to your point, Greg, it's not. Person to wanting to put something together, I just.
Yeah.
Don't wanna.
I'm just wanting us to.
But generally speaking, I'm sure this, we can make sure that, that you all agree.
Yeah.
But the moment I publish the agenda, it's, it's only gonna be good from that first moment.
Right. Hey, this is a reality show, we can write a script.
So, no, I assume, cause what is the flow of show when you're.
So, so, so.
Well, yeah, so it's gonna. See that in our line.
Yeah, I think, just to answer, to, to try to end it, I'll be honest, we would synthesize.
Yeah.
Beyond, you know. Think that, you know, it will be, when we get to it, after we do our first two hearings, after we explain. You know, the, the original flow of show of how we, we seen things work, when we get through our first two hearings, there's only two, right?
So one other, another continuum.
So that's, that's three.
Yeah, we have one, we have.
Oh.
This is one that has.
Cause that's one, well, there's two, but there's one. We have another word for that.
And another that has not, so potentially we could have one, um, other presentation on another project.
Okay, so, so, okay, I just, um, so once we get through that, that would, of a positive, sort of another, sort of, you know. In line. What now to expect, as we begin to, you know, as we delve into our first forty B in the last twenty-three years. Um, and explain what it is, at legal council there, um, I'll introduce, you know, legal council. For that and explain what their role is, and then ask them to give the initial overview, and then hand it back to me. I will then explain how we will flow through this. Um. Into the applicant's presentation, subject matter evening by evening, that this is a, you know, that, that, this is a, uh. You know, an endeavor of inches and yards over multiple evenings and multiple meetings, so. Um, every time you wish, don't do it as though or expect. As though you can get. To get through, or even to individual comments, know well that we will get to it. We're going to, you know, going to organize by subject matter. So that we have a hope of being digested and processed in those subject matter modules. And then we are going to begin by opening the hearing. And then we will begin at first. You know, with. Each and all of the board members, going through a list of, you know, because of the comprehensiveness, because all of the boards and commissions and all of the work. Every city department board will falls with us. We will be well outside of our areas of individual and like expertise, which is why we have. Like the individual expertise that surrounds us and, you know, cocooned us, we will, we have to understand, to ask for it. So you will hear us go through all the things that we can think of, there may be more. And we will ask the applicant to provide us with that, so. If your question is framed in the form of a demand about why we don't have something yet, know that it's coming. And that's part of it, right? So then we will. Done that, I guess, the, uh, we've gone through the list of the things we need. Um. I guess at that point. We should go to questions of the comment. Um, I'll remind everyone, these are the rules of the road every night, starting tonight. We'll go by the sign up list, we will endeavor to get through as many as is practical, we have a hard stop, and we will continue to have that hard stop. Ten P M, um, so that we can. Nimble, sprightly, perfectly. And, uh, and that is, that is a hard stop, that's a hard deck and no flex, right? That's just, so, so govern yourselves and your time accordingly, knowing that you can come back. Um, when it comes to individuals, we're gonna ask you to keep to a sharp two minutes, we'll govern it with a clock. I'll ask you to read the clock, we'll read the clock, we will as politely and courteously as possible ask you to stop talking. And, uh, and it's no discourteous intended, discourtesy intended, it is simply a, you know, an adherence to making sure that we adhere to as many people as we can. Doing the best possible job, gaining this information, we'll go through that list, uh, but we will. Keep public comment to, you know, and I'll tell everyone, we have fifty people on the list. Fifty people in two minutes is, uh, you know, a hundred minutes, we can do that. We will keep our public comment to.
Well, depends what time you give a speech, you just say, we'll stop at ten.
We'll stop at ten, yeah, so we will, so I will do some quick lawyer math and track. Then enlist the correction of all of that by everyone else, we will, we will, we will go through that until we're out of time.
We have people online on Zoom. Trying to speak.
Well, they, the way we did it on the council is they, you have them raise their hand, just so you can get it. So I have this list, and they have to raise their little yellow. And. You gotta count their fingers.
Yeah.
Everybody, people in the room get pressed, that's. Um, let, no. Here, you go first, and, um, if you are, um, you know, if you're online, you go second. That's, you know, that's just the way we'll do it, so we, so that means we have to add people. Online to.
Yeah.
List. And we run the risk of never being.
You, you need to tell that upfront, that people in the room are, are gonna be. Speaking first, and if we get to you folks online, um, if we get there, if not, you'll have a chance to speak at our next.
Yeah.
Or.
Yeah, sure, no, I mean, as the chair, this whole online thing is really in the board's discretion, you don't have to allow that. So I think you'd be doing people a favor to say this, why, why don't you come first?
Right.
Oh, because now, we have all kinds of problems with online, at least on the castle. People shout obscenities, they, they, they don't give their real name, I don't even believe this. We haven't had that, we've heard clinking glasses, and we've heard people come down the fluke.
Yeah, well, buckle up.
We have people that come down previously. And, uh. That's the worst we've seen, always a shout of obscenities.
No. But, question for you, so. If, if, um, if I'm not here on the twenty-fourth.
Come on now. What do you mean, if you're not here? Oh, shoot. Love the meter.
Am I allowed to watch it and then sign the ad, David, so you.
Of course.
And Emily, are you allowed, you're encouraged.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's demanded. No, it's demanded.
Yes.
Plan of having a few anniversaries this year as well.
Yeah.
All right.
And so, and so we get by this first one, yeah, just as you described, I think that's.
You think that flow, that's.
That's, that makes.
I'm wondering, as we move ahead, are we going to designate? This evening for a discussion of this, of the architectural issues related.
I think we should, I think we should try it.
So.
I think I think that'd be.
Yeah.
It also. At the same, we should, certainly too, because I can just say, we just need architects that, and I, and I have to be the traffic engineers, so you don't have to come with everybody.
Right.
So, so let me ask, uh, how do we broadcast and publish that, if at all, in advance?
We could put it on the agenda, yeah, the meeting line, it just, just give people written notice.
All right, how about, at the end of, at the end of our work, we hit ten o'clock before we, before we continue, um, for the evening. We should have a discussion and allow ourselves the flexibility of designating the next subject matter, next meeting, so that everyone in the room is on, on notice, they want to online, if we, if we do that as a notice. The planning department has time to put that on the agenda for next time, so.
I see why I think an applicant would.
Everybody, everybody comes down.
Yeah, so, so we can do that, and we can do it based on, you know, the, the logical, you know.
Yeah.
The flow, you know, we may find that, you know, we just want to start with.
Bro, bro. You could, you ask, you could dictate the pace. You can literally tell them that the next meeting, we want to talk about stormwater, so come up here.
But that's it. But that's it, it's just.
That's it, that's what we're talking about, and we're not our guys here, you have your guys here, there's a lot about stormwater.
Yeah, that's how.
Right, and I think that's great, and then it also will, it will hold true for the public companies.
Yeah.
If your comment begins with anything other than stormwater, we will have to invite you to.
It's not on the agenda, it won't be on the agenda.
We're gonna, we're not gonna be able to hear you, because it is, it is, it, it's, you know, it's just simply unfair to those in the room, your neighbors and peers who are here to speak about what they overall, you know, they brought the homework for the assignment.
People, people can always write in, to, like, if, if someone, if someone's like, well, I, I don't want to talk about stormwater, and they, they have a burr on their side. Yeah, if you process right, they will send us a letter.
Okay.
Andrew. It's okay. Andrew, until I, like, identify the broad topic areas that these things should be covered.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's a great idea.
And then we can circulate that, and we think there are any others, we start to tee this up.
That's a great idea, I'm gonna actually, I'm gonna share that to hear the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Subject matter.
Yeah.
We invite you to. Compelled to, but we invite you to organize your thinking, your comments, so we will be organizing digestion and process that's worth. And to create some, you know, some momentum as well as just, you know, cohesion, we will be. We will, we will be taking them on by. It's also efficient, it's economical. You know, you don't have to come very quickly. Public, you're here with, you know, a specific concern about traffic, you can insert if you wish, um. Can we have, can we, we should make it online speaking launch, but you're saying that I have the discretion to say, public comment is only in person.
Yeah, you do, checking the city as a listener.
You check.
The tax case. The governor. The governor has to have emergency laws to allow you to do it. Since COVID.
Yeah.
It was not allowed.
I'm managing it.
It doesn't tell you to do it. Wow.
We're just gonna, and if you, and if you can't cover a person, we understand, we use, we ask you to submit your comments, right?
Yeah.
That's your right.
If you can't come here.
But it, but we, you know, but, but there's just simply no way we can officially. I think, I'll say honestly, it's due process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's gonna be awkward.
We tried to, we voted about it, we voted to ban it. We did it. Steven and I kind of wanted to ban it, and then, oh, yeah, then we, we got told. Yeah, told.
We, we, we think it'll be, if you have. Before, some of you will allow the online people to talk. You're gonna.
But, but we know that on this one. So, so it's not, it's fair, it's fair, if it's a one-shot deal, like this variance tonight, okay. I'll let people call it, but we're gonna be at this for a few months.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think we should consider giving fair notice to the public and dispense with online, you know, comments anyway, it's just. It is tedious, it creates a caste system of public comment, like you are somehow, I mean, I, I hear it, and there is a rationale behind it, but it's still, I don't love how it feels. Case, smells or sounds, and we're like, you know, there's priority getting those in the room, because we decided, you know, and, and we just happened to, we, we just happened to be. You know. Rather than just saying, it's just university. No. And now we don't, now everyone has, you know, eaten last standing comment, if you're here. We write a letter, and we, we have a letter, but we write, but we have to be, you know, we have to be, you know, in good faith, that identity. It's not just for record keeping, it's cumbersome, you know. I had no idea that that.
Yeah, they've actually shut off the mic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that looks something bawling.
No bawling.
Something bawling. This is. I feel something even up. Go. You know. All right, um, and all rates, you know, like this. Process to just sort of hash this out, I, I mean, honestly, I have very, I have a better sense of comfort in, you know, in how this flow is following in my mind and sort of getting to share that, you know, get your feedback and fatigue has reshaped it, so I. Feel like there's some order, and we'll, you know.
Yeah.
But that's great, I think we've got. We made, you know, huge. Um, okay.
All right.
Just leave it there. It was banned. Thanks, guys.